Okay, I would like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The time is 6:03. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Tony Kane, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, Ms. Edwards.
President Joseph Bistro?
Here.
Ms. Barbara Marino?
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a C?
Yo.
Mr. Salvador Escobar?
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane with a K?
Here.
Ms. Andy Parker?
Here.
Ms. Jean-Pina?
Here.
Ms. Jose Rivera?
Here.
And Ms. Tina Santino?
Right here!
And a moment of meditation. Thank you. I don't have anyone on our list for public participation. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to reports, starting with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to speak to the board tonight. It's, as is my tradition, to give the board your advanced copy of our beautiful District Dispatch newsletter featuring somebody who's at the table with us right now tonight on the cover. It was a real moment of pride for the school, for the superintendent, and I think for the district to be chosen for the location of an important press conference with Governor Lamont. That's the topic of the cover shot and the inside fold. Also joined by Commissioner Russell Tucker, Representative Turco, and other really important dignitaries from both state and private universities and community colleges. It's a great opportunity to feature the fact that more than 70 of our students have already taken advantage of early acceptance, and Arianna spoke quite eloquently about that. We were chosen because of our high participation rate, so it's something for us to be proud of, of our high school, of our school counselors who worked very hard to make that happen. So I was pleased to be at the press conference as well. As always, a little bit of superintendent's recognition, those people last month who received the superintendent's challenge coin. Just a little bit of context for you when you turn the page. It was pajama day at Vance, if you were wondering why the people are dressed the way they were in those photos. Thanks to the teachers who didn't mind having their pictures taken for publication in their pajamas. A really nice article on the recognition breakfast that occurs on a regular basis at homeschool. The college-bound article is about the topic we just talked about. A very nice article about somebody near and dear to one of our board members thanking Ms. Miano, one of our teachers, a really, really nice story there. Wrapping up the athletic season, and then, of course, the district's updates, one of which is also tied to our participation with our lawmakers at the state level. And as I've mentioned to the board members in my recent emails, very excited to try to have a positive voice in getting more of our students dual-credit. That means helping kids earn college credit while they're still at Middlebury High School. There's a lot of bureaucracy to that. There's a lot of red tape. Right now, the process is quite cumbersome. Each teacher who teaches such a class has to be vetted individually by the university or the community college. So I'm very thankful that Representative Curry has taken an interest in working with us on that. I'm not naive. I know how slow the legislative process can sometimes work, but it's good to have his ear, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm hopeful that will have some positive impact for the kids at Middlebury. As usual, lots of really, really great news in the rest of the dispatch. Couple of things that I just want to mention is, I just want to remind you, obviously it's a big item on tonight's agenda, the facilities study. As I've mentioned to you in my weekly email to you, I think tonight, and I don't want to, I don't, I'm not one for hyperbole, I'm not one to hopefully exaggerate, tonight really truly is, in my opinion, a watershed moment for you as a board, and potentially for us as a district. Looking at the facility study, it's not just about roofs and boilers and square footage. This is a chance, and I think it's quite an exciting chance, for you as board members to decide the future of our school district. It is, how many elementary schools should we have? How many middle schools should we have? What types of alternative high schools or other schools should we have? This all hinges on whether or not we have a place to put them. And so, hearing the study, which will be mostly about our current state, is what I hope is the first of many, many important conversations for you board members to have. The staff and I are ready to work with you, to help you, to advise you, to give you our professional opinion, to tell you what we've seen work well in other districts, or what's not worked well in other districts. But it's a perfect opportunity, I believe, for exactly what the board is supposed to do, and that's governance. Your job is going to be to choose, or make a vision, for what our programming looks like for the next 10 or 20 years. What should be renovated? What should be knocked down? What should be reconstructed? What should be built new? And what types of programming for kids do you want to provide as board members in those spaces? So while it can be easy to say, "Oh, it's just a facility study, now we know what roof is next," or "Now we know what elementary school gets renovated next," yes, and it's really about what a child's educational experience might look like from pre-K through 12. So I'm happy and anxious and really looking forward to helping you as the elected officials in that process. And finally, my report tonight, to end on a positive note, the budget.
You said positive.
So as I've been advising the board for six months now or so, it would be foolish not to expect a very difficult budget year. You have some very difficult choices ahead of you. Whether those choices be relatively soon, with the budget that you choose to send to the city for the council and the mayor's consideration, or if you choose to wait for those harder discussions after we get a budget back from the city, one way or the other, obviously there are hard decisions and hard conversations to come. I hope that the presentation of the budget itself at least gives you some confidence in the staff and in me, because it certainly does give me confidence in the staff. Hope that you read in the narrative the large number of contributors. So this was something new last year, wasn't something that was around prior to my becoming your superintendent. It's a very participatory budget process. And I just want to take a moment just to, I'll do this again when we talk on Wednesday, but just to highlight the fact that each budget owner, and once again, this year we had 40 budget owners, so every principal is a budget owner, every central office director, district-wide director is a budget owner, was asked to present a budget to me, and I specifically asked that they do their budget presentation with a team of their own. So it's easy to say anywhere between 150 and 200 people contributed to the formation of this budget. And while the decisions will be tough, I go to bed at night with confidence in the process. I think what you've got before you, even when we will have, and I'm sure we will have philosophical disagreements or discussions, it won't be about whether or not the numbers are accurate, or the numbers are realistic. And the other thing that's built into the budget is, unfortunately, it only impacts a relatively small part, is prioritizing. That was something new this year that I've done previously in my prior district. We didn't do it here last year because we were starting such a new process here, but so every budget owner outside of their personnel was asked to prioritize their request. Priority 1, 2, 3. Priority 1 is considered mission critical. Priority 1 is 85% of what they received last year. Priority 1 plus priority 2 is 92% of what they received last year. And 1 plus 2 plus 3 is 100% of what they received last year. So I want to tell you, even though that 8.6% requested increase is a shocking number, a much larger number than I ever hoped I would bring to you, please know that, in essence, it was based on a flat budget. Now, an increase of 8.6% doesn't sound flat, but in fact, it is flat even with a very strong reduction in the Esser staffing. So I know, and it's been my whole professional life, it's okay if you gotta chuckle when I sent you yet another pie chart to follow up all the other pie charts that are in the narrative, but I hope you took a chance to look at that and see that the vast majority of the requested increase is truly coming from things that are not easily controlled by the board or by the superintendent. Things like contractual increases, special ed tuition, and the biggest chunk, which was a surprise to both Ms. Alfano and me, benefits. And that benefits number is based on estimates that we get from our insurance consultants. So tonight's not for the budget discussion, but I wanted to kind of give you that context and get you ready. I'm looking forward to presenting the budget to you on Wednesday, and of course, answering your questions and helping you with your difficult decisions. So that's my report for the evening.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, starting with personnel.
Okay, we met, and we have a couple of new positions and job disruptions and some after-school stipends that we have on the consent agenda tonight.
Thank you. Finance?
We went over some donations, some purchase orders, as well as reviewing some financial reports from the district's various departments that we will be reviewing on the consent agenda, and we might have a few that might be coming off the consent agenda, might look according to the agenda tonight.
And curriculum?
We obviously had our first meeting. A lot of it was taken up by, not a lot of it, but a good amount of it was taken up by the math curriculum at the high school, the problem-solving class. Obviously, a great interest because, you know, it's an area where we can sort of improve some of our kids' experiences, I guess, in math, and some of the aches and pains that come with that. We also had a presentation from Ms. Solar as well, about some of the disciplinary things that she's working on as a part of her position in culture, and I'm just looking forward to kind of keeping that conversation going.
And policies?
We had our first meeting, and we had a number of policies, a couple of policies that are on the consent agenda that we discussed and reviewed. Also, one of the items that came up, that I think we mentioned, was doing a policy audit with CAPE, and that is also built in. It was under discussed during finance, but it is part of the policy process and committee, so that's hoping to, I've got an email drafted to go to Mr. Gohler tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Are there any board reports?
I would just like to say, last night, on the sports news, which I don't normally watch, but they mentioned Darwin Shaw, and Darwin's been working in the school system for 39 years, and he coaches 700 games.
700 games.
Yeah, and he's won, what, 530-something?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, so that should be recognized.
And he still looks the same, damn it.
Looks like a kid.
Doesn't change from when he was in high school.
Yeah, like when he was in high school, yes.
Maybe we should bring him up for board recognition one night.
Yeah, I think that would, he's worthy of it.
Any other board reports?
I was also impressed with that, last night, you know, being a teacher, life for, out there in the storm, the first district I saw, the call it, yeah, all the districts waved, and you were taking the lead on it.
Yep, set the bar.
Thank you, but Ms. Langer, Ms. Gonzalez, and I, we're still up at 4:00 AM to check anyway.
Just saying that I do keep in touch with my school's, both assignment and also where my kids go to school, so I can just tell you that Pulaski Pathways has a serious need for art supplies. If anybody wants to send anything over to Pulaski Pathways, we greatly appreciate it. It's been helping the kids learn. I have had some great conversations with them, and it's just been helping them learn. So, and it's a great segue into the high school pathways, which are doing some wonderful things, and just, you know, a lot going on through the holidays. We're talking about kids that are, have more medical needs, medically complex, and may not understand every facet about the holiday, but they definitely were able to get into the spirit, and I was just so proud of them, and I was able to share in that experience as well. SLADE is doing some amazing things with their cooking club. So I will tell you that because after-school activities were canceled Thursday before the holiday, my kid was, and he reminded me often, that they were not able to finish the empanadas they had started on Tuesday. And I'm sorry, I have just never seen my kid actually so upset about not finishing baking empanadas. So if anybody can make that happen again, please, say something for them. So, cooking club and getting ready for more clubs as they expand at middle school levels would be awesome.
I have a question. In anticipation of upcoming weather, and speaking of SLADE, so are we filling sandbags already, or what?
Ms. Gonzalez and I have already discussed that, right? We have a consulting meteorologist, and she's already got a plan with, not only with our equipment, but she's in contact with the city.
So Jeff has got his rowboat ready?
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's-
I mean, he's walking around on stilts, right?
It's an issue that we do need to rectify soon. I think unfortunately, the remedy that the city believes will work, which is actually installing an additional drainage pipe, probably won't happen until the spring. So until then, it's a little bit of extra blood pressure for Ms. Gonzalez and for me, and for really anybody who works there. It's, it's something to really keep in mind as you hear the facilities report tonight of, is that, you know, not only the flooding, but then we continue to be super cautious with performing indoor air quality checks, and when and if needed, doing the mitigations. What I know from speaking with the mayor, speaking with Ms. Gonzalez, is it's actually a neighborhood-wide issue. There's more runoff is actually coming from the surrounding neighborhood, landing on that property than has in the past, along with what looks like the storm drains at some point actually working in reverse and coming up onto the SLADE property, so.
I was just watching the weather report and just-
Yeah, yep, yep. It's one of the first things we think about. Thankfully, again, we had a temporary opportunity to move central registration out there, which is doing a very nice job over at Chamberlain, but again, that square footage was intended and bonded to be a school-based health center, so that's not going to be the permanent location.
When we get to the facilities report, it's surprising that the number of buildings that SLADE is not the only one suffering from similar type issues, so that's something I'll be asking about when we do our facilities report.
All right, moving on to student reports.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I'm starting off, but first I just want to say thank you so much for letting me be on the District Dispatch. I was surprised and-
We can give you a couple more copies to take home.
Oh, yeah, my mom's gonna love it. I just feel really honored to represent and brand and all that we accomplish here, so thank you, everyone. So just at the high school, next week, the first semester's ending at school, and the second semester starts right now. A lot of students are just going through tests and projects. I know all of us are kind of experiencing that. And then, the only sport that I know that's really going on or continuing right now in the winter is boys and girls basketball, so.
Yep, I will, hello, I will touch on the yearbook. So I'm editor-in-chief of the yearbook, so we started that this week. So the seniors have now got the forms for the shooter quotes and superlatives, so that's gonna start on. And then also, me and my friend Annalise, we got into ENIAC, which is a national council for drug prevention, so that's also really cool. It's like a very selective group of people that I'm very excited to work with, so that's-
Congratulations.
How much did you guys charge for your yearbook?
I'm sorry?
How much is your yearbook?
I believe it's 65.
And over the past week, there was a shelter in place, although the incident was handled correctly, and I recall that all students were able to maintain safety, whether it be inside classrooms, in the bathroom, because I know some students, they stayed there, turned themselves from place, but I feel like it was very organized and a great display of safety.
My two grandchildren that are at the high school never ever mentioned it. I found out about it when we got a call or something, and I asked them, "Did that happen at school?" And my granddaughter said, "Yeah, we went to cafeteria," but not, you know, not there.
Something stays and other things don't.
Yeah, I mean, I was in the main office, so I saw the police officers were very, very swiftly, and props to them, honestly, because it was very like, when you hear that, I feel like nobody would take longer, but it was very swift and very, from what I saw, very professional, so props to them, because it was very quick, so.
Look for my grandchildren if anything happens. They're going to their bed.
I agree with them. I was stuck in the main office when that was going on, and I was hearing the staff running around with the police officers as well, and they handled it digitally and quick. It was, everything was followed to the T, so they handled it well.
That's all for the student report.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
Thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to our presentation for the night, so these master planner, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Venable.
We have Mary Venable with us tonight from our Contractor Bureau Veritas. You guys can join us at the table here at the front. I thought the table would be better than two people squeezing onto the podium.
Everyone, happy New Year.
For their discussion. And we have other members of the facilities department with us if there are any further questions. So just to kind of give the board a cue, we've asked Mary to prepare about a 30-minute talk with you, but we want to hear your questions, we want to hear your insight, so we're prepared for this part of the agenda to take as long as it takes, because we want to make sure you feel well informed, but also with the knowledge that tonight's not your only chance to look at this document and to get questions answered. Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you so much. Very highly anticipated time for us, and we're really excited to be here on the New Year, presenting this information, so I wanted to introduce Mary Venable, who's been our lead project manager with the project for the last, coming up on, it's in nine months. She's been on the ground, moving bounds since the inception of the project, visiting our schools and doing the facilities condition portions of the recording, and then some of the actual planning of the data and getting the data all into a 3D scanning, so she's been very involved in the beginning of the project, and as of late, the lead project manager, so I'm happy to be here with Mary and present our data in front of you today.
Thank you. Of course. All right. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I've been made very welcome, and we've been glad to work with you over these past several months. Well, you all have our roll-up report, and I don't want to go through that page by page, but what I wanted to do tonight was to give you a little background on the process and how we came to these conclusions, the steps that we took. And so I have a little PowerPoint, and so I wanted to start by telling you a little bit about who Bureau Veritas is. So Bureau Veritas is actually a large international company, but our little department of it is, you see all the way on that little tree, Asset Management Department, we're actually based in Baltimore, and we have assessors all over the country. And what we do is, we go out and we help building owners manage their properties, basically. We give you information about the properties by going in doing a thorough assessment on site, and we prepare data on the facilities, overall facilities, the components, and prepare a 20-year schedule of when you guys will need to spend money, basically, to replace things. Can you have the next slide, please? Okay. We do all kinds of assessments for our owners, pretty much from cradle to grave. We have, we have a design department, and we help people with disposal, so we do that and everything in between. And those are a few of our clients. We do lots of schools. We work with lots of school districts, and so those are a few of them. As I know, you weren't all here on the board when we started this process, so I'll give you an overview of the steps, the tasks that we started with for you. The biggest one is the facility condition assessment, which is where we go in and look at every building and the grounds to see, to look for everything those buildings need. We did an energy audit to see if there are ways that we could get you some replacements to, say, on your utility bills. Did the space utilization, which Dr. Gaspere mentioned before. We actually went in and did 3D laser scanning of each building, each school, and that resulted in a, an autocad drawing for each school that is measured, that is totally accurate. So that's something that's really useful that you can use when planning additional work on schools. And another, probably the other big thing that I'd like to mention is that we have all of this information in a database now, item by item, with costs, with dates of replacement, a thorough description of the item, and that is, that database is yours to use. Our software, which is called ASIC, is something that we give to you, and you have to use it for, I believe the term is five years, but you can update it, if you replace items, you can switch them out in the database and then generate new reports that give you new financial information. And it has all kinds of reports for you to cut and dice to find whatever financial information you need, so it's got lots of different reports that are used for you. So the big part, yes, this is good, this is good, yeah. So the process that we used was, first of all, we talked, we sent out questionnaires. We had questionnaires about what's good with the schools, or what's, you know, what needs attention. We looked at any plans that were available, and then we sent our assessors out. So like I mentioned to you, we have assessors all over the country. So our assessors will go out for, you know, say, one to four days, depending on the size of the facility, and just look at every piece of it, and it goes into our database. After that, we work on our reports, and finally, we present them to you, going tonight. In addition to that, right after this, I will work with school district staff on the database, show you how to use it, and all of the information that we gather. To say a little bit about what we look at when we go to a facility, we look at everything. So we go to the site, and we look at playgrounds, play equipment, parking lots, sidewalks. Of course, we looked at the building itself, the exterior of the building, the building shell, see if that's in good condition, roofing. Look at every interior finish, judge the condition of those, and we put in quantities. And especially the mechanical systems, and those are always a big dollar item. So we look at every item that, in the building, basically. Most things in a building will need replacement over a certain number of years. Things like the foundation may not. If it's a brick building, the brick probably doesn't need to be replaced, but sometimes it needs to be tuck-pointed, repaired. Everything else in a building, pretty much, at one time or another, is going to need This screenshot is, that's how we collect data. So we all go out with an iPad, and others are a couple of shots of how it's connected to our database. And we have a cost database in our central office, and it has thousands of items in it. It has the typical cost of that item and the typical lifespan. So we go out and we'll pull up, if we're looking at an item, we'll pull up that database item for- report, we'll input the year that it was installed, if we know, or we'll assume one based on the condition, and we record everything that way. So that's how the data from your buildings gets into our database. Each one of our assessors is trained to look at items to judge how much time they have left, basically. This is an example of how we judge roofs, how we judge if they're in good or fair condition. Now this is where we get into the overall building. Now, so far, I've been talking about pieces, right, components of the building, but all of these things wrapped together will give you a score by which to judge the overall building. And the facility condition index is how we do that. And what that is, could you repeat that one more time, because another piece comes up? So what this is, is the amount, the dollar amount of replacements that need to be made at a certain time, point in time, divided by the cost to replace the building. So it's a ratio. If that ratio is low, say if there's not that many things that need to be replaced in comparison to the whole building, the building's in excellent condition, right? This is a way to numerically judge that. So if that ratio to cost unit compared to overall building replacement cost is low, is within, you know, a few under 5%, then we can put a number on that and say that building is excellent. If you talk about a building, if you say it's in fair condition, what does that mean? Well, with this method, we can actually put a dollar value or a percent value on it. And so we generally say if a building's FCI is, say, between 5% and 10%, we'll call it good. If it's over 30%, we start to wonder about that building, because that's, that starts to be a lot of replacements needed for a building. And if you get up to 60%, you probably want to replace that building rather than throwing good money after bad, basically. If that number gets between, you know, 30% and 60%, you have some thinking to do, you know, what are you going to do with that building? So this gives you an actual number by which to compare different facilities to each other. And I wanted to show you this chart because you'll see these in the reports for each building. This is a graphic representation of what I was just talking about over a period of 10 years. So you see along the bottom, we started in 2023, those 10 years, the blue vertical bars are the dollar amounts that we anticipate need to spend for that year. So if you see along the right-hand side, there are dollar amounts. The gray bars are carryover. Now, this is going to assume that you don't spend any money at all. So the gray bars are carryover from the previous year. And, and then you see the red line. The red line represents that facility condition index, and that's off to the left. And you can see percentages, 10%, 20%, 30%. So again, this is a visual way of seeing if your building is, what kind of condition you're going to be in after a certain number of years, if nothing is done. Now, if you, if you replace things as they're needed, you know, it doesn't go up like that, but this is just a visual representation.
So Mary, if I may paraphrase, it seems as though the blue bars are anticipated costs with proper maintenance. Is that an okay way of paraphrasing that?
Yes, at least proper capital replacements.
And correct capital replacements, not just, not just day-to-day maintenance. And the gray bars are the anticipated cost if we don't keep up with that.
That's exactly right.
If we're penny wise but pound foolish, we end up with the gray bars.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Okay, so talk about what we found for your schools. These are the facility condition assessments results. You see that they are in chunks of years, current year, third year, fourth year, 10 year, page by one of your reports.
Page what, Rebecca? Thank you.
And these are cumulative. This, again, is showing exactly what that chart is. You see by the color coding, which schools.
I'm sorry, just so the board members can catch up, it's actually got two-page numbers. Page five of the report, page 12 of the packet. It says five in the middle and then 12 up to the side. Sorry to interrupt.
It looks like that. But this shows you which schools need more TLC. Now, you see Chamberlains down at the bottom. It's so new that it will remain in excellent condition without a lot of money needing to be spent on it. But these schools up at the top, Holmes, Delaire, you see that those are going to have more expenditures coming up in the next 10 years that need to be addressed. Does anybody have any questions about this so far?
So just the context, Mary, please, like, a score of like, losing like, 20% as an old teacher, to me, that, that's a B minus, that's pretty good. But really, what you're saying is, when that ratio gets to 20%, it's really either, is it too much to say that it's time to really start thinking about renovation or replacement?
I wouldn't say 20%, I'd say over 30%.
Okay. So as we look out at that 10-year mark where we've got Holmes, which is already slated for renovation at 28%, but D-Lo, not too far behind, at 27%, is getting close to that 30% mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, as it stands, where does D-Lo fall in our plan, current plan?
We don't have a current plan.
But this is in the order recommended in terms of the five, three.
The purpose of the study is for us to have a plan.
To get a plan.
I thought it was like Holmes and Jefferson.
So what I'll say is, is, yes, those, those schools have been discussed in that order, but one of the reasons I wanted to commission this study is because upon arriving as your superintendent, I didn't find a written plan.
Right.
I found a lot of talk about what schools should be next or could be next, but the board hadn't yet done a plan such as this, so.
So looking at this, Holmes definitely should be, but maybe it could be, it doesn't necessarily have to be Jefferson, maybe it should be D-Lo next.
That's for the board to discuss. Absolutely.
I have a question. Considering that this is going to be over a period of years, how do we update? What, once we're done, they're gone, how are you going to keep this up to date?
So I believe it's good practice for a board to do something like this, and Mary can correct me, really, every seven to 10 years, you should look at having a plan like this, revisit the plan, is it still up to date? Did something happen at a building that we didn't expect? So this is, should not be like a one-shot deal. This is something, this is a plan that, you know, I like to say, you know, we should find this on your desk and mine, Annie, with like, coffee mug stains on it and riffled pages and, and then when we decide it's time to come back, what's, what's an average kind of renewal time for a study such as this one, Mary?
I think you're right on the mark there. We have clients that do them every 10 years, we have some that do them every five years, but we do, do repeat reviews for clients.
And so far, this is just based on the physical condition, not, you know, enrollment to.
Enrollment's coming.
Yeah. This is physical condition only.
Well, no, the space utilization's in the report and it's coming, I'm sure Mary's going to mention it. Well, this part here. Correct. So far, yeah.
Yeah, strictly, and just hit a dollar amount. All right. Should we go on?
Please.
All right. Now, this is the same information, but it's just a little different graphical format, which I think is nice to look at. Again, same order, Holmes at the top, Chamberlains down at the bottom, based on the condition of that school, according to the FCI. So what you can see here is that the reason the, the bars are different lengths, okay? You see for the high school, it's very long. High school's a pretty good condition. You see out of 10 years, you know, there are quite a few, I think it was about $19,000 that was showing up in year 10, but it's a larger facility. So it's, it's not in worse shape, these are all relative to themselves, but this shows relative dollar amounts, okay? Holmes is still the one that needs the most attention, according to how much it would cost to replace it.
And there's an inflation increment built into these numbers, Mary? When you look out 10 years into the future?
Yes, 3%, 3%. Yes. So, yeah, you see, smaller facilities have, have shorter bars and, you know, less dollar cost, but again, this, this is more showing the relative, the relative dollar costs between the schools. Would you like me to, let's see, does that sound like we talked about, right? Yes. Yeah. Yeah, and basically, it's, it's the expenditure needed for each school compared to, again, school replacement. And that's why this chart, you see a lot of relatively long bars on the homes, they're just shorter than the high school because it's a smaller facility. I hope that makes sense. All right. Okay. Now, I'm going to present three different charts that look like this, and these are dollar amounts, okay, that show the different kinds of replacements that are going to be needed district-wide, in three different chunks of years. One thing I want to point out, I see these are all the different building systems, right? You see.
Page 12 of the report, 19 of the packet. Sorry.
Exactly. You see, there's roofing, fire alarms, interiors. But what I want to point out is, there's four sections on this that are kind of large segments of the pie, okay? Roofing, which is green at the top right, interiors, at the bottom right, electrical, which is over to the left, the green section, and HVAC, which is toward the bottom. You see those are the four large sections.
And I think unfortunately, on the board's printout, Ms. Edwards, we lost all of the labels.
It's the same thing for the packet.
The packet too. Oh!
Doesn't it mean?
They're both blank.
It's in, it's in the computer version.
Yeah. So we can work on getting the board an updated printout. I'm not sure why the text didn't come through.
Oh, shoot, okay. Well, as you look at the building expenses that are anticipated for the next 20 years, those are the four that are always large and you can't get around them, David. They'll probably need replacement on every facility within 10 years, or 20 years, I'm sorry. So that just shows you some of the relative expenditures, and you'll see that in these first five years, we're looking at about $47 million. If we look at the next one, the next one is the next four years, probably. Again, you see those are the major categories that are needed, it will be needed. Roofing is pretty much non-negotiable, right? You need it. It's, the integrity of the building depends on that. HVAC should not be negotiable. I know that in a lot of the older schools, the heating is not so good and a lot of them don't have cooling and, and the weather's getting hotter, you know? But, so that's, that's a very important thing. Anything that has to do with building integrity and interior livability, it is high priority. Interiors, you can get away with letting them slide. I mean, you don't want to, but you know, when it comes to a, a push between roofing and flooring, you know, replacing vinyl tile, you know, roofing should win. Can we see the next one? Again, you'll see this is a much higher dollar amount, but this covers 10 years. And then you see 20 years. Oh, yeah.
No, it covers a 10-year span.
Yeah, 10-year span, right, uh-huh, up to year 20. And, and as you'll see, interiors, again, interiors is often a huge dollar amount and you see that that's the case here. In these charts, you will see, for instance, electrical, you see fire protection and plumbing. There are systems in each building, those three systems particularly, that have a long lifespan, typically 40 years, but, and they can last much longer, but typically, 40 years is considered the normal lifespan for electrical components or for piping, for your boiler system. And even though those items may not be shot at the other 40 years, that's when you have to start budgeting for them, because you know that eventually you will need to replace them. And you'll see those throughout the tickets.
So I just have a question. So the other, if you did the maintenance and whatever you have to do for those first five years and then is the next one built on the fact that you did or didn't do it the first five years?
Oh.
Do they increase?
Is it cumulative, like your blue and gray charts, or it assumes ongoing?
Ah, I'm glad you, I'm glad you asked that because I meant to say that. Those particular charts were not cumulative, those are for, for individual segments of the year. Yes. Those are for those. All right. Okay. Well, I had a few, so far, that's pretty much the process that I wanted, wanted you all to see. We had a few excerpts of a few of the schools that would be next. Hey, could you, I think it's a little farther up.
I think if you go, I think you want to go back to.
Oh, yeah, the backward. You're right. That's right.
D-Lo, there you go.
I got lost. Yeah, so I wanted to show you a few of the schools that are up high on the list and this is one. And we were, y'all were talking about flooding earlier today. Yeah, that's one that, that we've been talking about that has that problem. And, you know, like I, I heard that at Slay, right, the drain is being pushed out until a little later. Flooding is a building integrity issue and it's, it's high priority, I would suggest, you know, that, that needs to come before, before. Flooding also causes mold inside a building and you can't have that, you can't have the injury or quality problems from that, so, you know, I encourage, encourage all, if possible, you know, put that up at the top of the list. Okay. So you'll see this chart, and this is the one I mentioned before, the blue and gray bars, and you'll see that in every one of the individual reports for each school. You see that, so this shows how D-Lo is getting upward, you know, about 20% more. And this, this chart that you also see in the report, this is the one where those, those doughnut charts came from. They are graphical representation of this system, we call this system, expenditure forecast, and it tells you what items you need to spend money on and it, in different years, they're grouped together. I mean, like HVAC is with your boilers, piping, rooftop, so the items are grouped in categories on this. I wanted to mention, you see in the packet that I've put in some key findings and priority One that you'll see is the woodchips. We, we had reports that woodchip playgrounds contain hazards.
A disaster, yes.
And so everywhere we have seen those, we have recommended that those be replaced with rubber floors. Yeah, so you'll see that in there as a priority, because we saw it as a safety item, right? Safety items are top priority. Building integrity items come next. Building integrity items come next. And unfortunately, the things that make a building pretty are not the highest priority. So in this building, we did see some poor finishes, but building integrity things that we saw were windows, HVAC, and the lockers were old, interior finishes, as I mentioned. And throughout the older schools, we saw just the problem with no AC. Right? Okay. I see. Right?
I just have a question.
Yes?
Smelly, we're doing a new playground, right?
At Holmes, there'll be a new playground. Lincoln is getting a new playground.
So no woodchips, right?
No, you use a rubber place.
Much more expensive. So you see, class, we get up to that twenty percent mark too. So twenty percent, it's not enough for, just means, needs some expenditures, needs somebody to spend on. And the immediate costs, you see there's a few big items. We put interiors in there because, I think this is the one that had asbestos, might have passed on asbestos tiles. So that's a safety item. So that's why that interior finish would be priority.
Who was the asbestos child?
I don't know.
Most of the 50s classrooms have nine-by-nine files and the masks behind the marker boards and the coat base.
Which, just to be clear, because obviously, it's a word that stands out, is not a problem unless they're disturbed or chipped or cracked.
Frugal.
So they're considered to be in a safe state unless they are somehow damaged and/or removed, correct?
That's right.
And I've seen some of that put in in the nineteen forties that looks beautiful. You know, it'll last forever, unfortunately.
You won't.
All right, but there comes a time. Comes a time for replacement. So, okay, all right, you good? Okay, let's see. We're good, yeah. All right. So Slade is not coming in as high up on the facility condition index, right? Except for cumulative. Cumulative. So the things we saw there, and that's why I say the building's, oh, it felt pretty good, but there were quite a few HVAC things, you know, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, rooftop maintenance were old. Again, we mentioned the flooding, and I don't know if y'all have gotten that all figured out, or had a design done for that yet. But, you know, to me, it seems that the site needs to be built so that it doesn't flow down the ramp into the building.
Just to go back to Slade, we have, we've had some major upgrades there to the roof and the rooftop maintenance, so I don't know whether they're running. Will you capture the news?
Oh, may not have.
Well, I think that work was actually being done while the facility study was being done. So Slade now has upgraded, or new HVAC equipment in.
Nice, okay. All right. I think we were out there in September. It was warm, wasn't it snowy? Okay, yeah, and quite a few interior things. Oh, it's good, it's good. One thing I wanted to mention, so it's not sprinkler heads in that. Sprinkler heads have a normal life of twenty-five years, so they're relatively replaced because they're safety, if they're old, you know, they might still work, but, and they're full of safety.
Well, until fires, I know. Proactive.
So I asked that the high school be included in Mary's synopsis here, when Ms. Gonzalez and I talked, and we obviously didn't want you to sit for a presentation of all nineteen schools tonight, it's just a taste of, but as you saw, the high school isn't at the top of the list of needing replacement, but it's a frequent topic of conversation here, not only for the facility itself, but the layout of the facility and what that does or doesn't do for school security. So that's why I asked that it be talked about tonight as one of the kind of featured schools. Mary, thanks.
Okay, yeah, let me talk about that. So, let me just about the high school. We understand, see, it's in decent condition. There are a few things that it needs. What's the next one, please? So, you know, the typical things, the new roofing, HVAC things, parking lot needs work. But other than that, we saw something interesting when we did the space analysis, and I'll talk about that in just a second, how we did that, but now the state has a standard size for classrooms. They say they should be nine hundred square feet, and that should accommodate five students. So that should be your class size. The high school has ample space, if you count the space within the classrooms that should be used, but the classrooms are small. They're very small. And so I don't know why they live something that way. But what I think should happen is that the UnitedHealthcare should look at that to see if maybe the interior spaces are just not utilized to their best advantage as they're probably laid out. So that was an interesting thing about that. Another thing is that that building has a ton of doors.
Duh.
And I don't know why. I mean, I looked at the floor plan, I see some of these doors that I wouldn't have. I think there's, should be a study, a more thorough study into that. Do all those doors need to be there? Are there things you can do to increase the security? Because I feel like anybody could walk in, you know, somebody could hold up on the door, and anybody could walk in. In fact, we got that comment a lot, that the sites are generally not secure.
So just, I mean, for the board's context, if I believe the count is correct, is it seventy-two?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one doors.
I was thinking seventy-two, seventy-one.
Right. We have.
They'll leave the outside.
Seventy-two, correct, seventy-two exterior doors, seventy-one exterior doors.
How many security guards?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. Kane. We have eleven security officers, five administrators, and a handful of deans in BSAs. Right, even if we put everybody at a door, there wouldn't be enough people. If all we did was have people stand at doors, there still wouldn't be enough people.
And even if you put a camera at every door, you can't possibly have enough people manning every camera.
So this is why I wanted this talk about, tonight, to start the conversation about the building of our high school, even though it doesn't rank highly on the FCI index as needing architectural renewal, is there a need to think about renovation to bring it up either to spec or at least closer to spec with modern school security approaches? So usually, we talk about renovating a school when it's reached the end of its service life, or, as this says, the FCI gets to a certain point. I think there's a chance for the board to talk about, does that building get renovated or replaced with modern school security in mind, which is certainly very, very different from when it was originally constructed. Nobody today would build any school with that many exterior doors. And when I've had talks with some parents who ask about, well, my kid just walked in, and our staff is doing what they can, but we can't, we can't be everywhere when a child knowingly tries to evade the adults that are supervising the building, right? When a teenager knowingly says, nobody's looking right now, let me open the door for my friend, right? We've got lots of staff, lots of cameras, but with that quantity of access to the outside, it's just not practical for us to fix the problem with staffing, or having the staff we have do different things. So, again, it's a longer conversation, as Mary suggests, perhaps it's something that the board asks me to investigate, a study that's just about the high school, and even though this one is quite detailed, even more detailed. So while we, you know, to the question of what's our plan, what's next? Typically, we've heard talked about Chamberlain just got finished, Holmes is next, we've heard Jefferson talked about, Jefferson is actually already mentioned in existing legislation. But perhaps it's not just the replacement cost that the board should be thinking about, it's what do you want your high school to look like and feel like and function like? That might be part of your conversation, too. So the FCI is a great starting point for knowing, like, hey, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish and keep on throwing money into Jefferson School, for example, or Dileretto School. But also, is there a need that's not just based on when stuff's wearing out, but what changes we want to make to how, in this case, the high school works? So that's why I asked Mary to make this part of her quick talk.
Just consider we just set a security audit, two, take the two audits together.
Exactly.
And weigh the need to say where we need.
And the quantity of doors showed up in both of them.
Yeah. And here, as somebody who lives in that neighborhood, that isn't really concerned with neighbors, is the number of kids, and that task come up, is all the number of doors the kids come in and out of.
Yeah.
Before we move on, our student reps, who use the high school daily, do you have anything you want to add? Not to put you on the spot, but.
I really do agree that there is, like, a lot of ways to enter and leave the building. I know just that we're seniors, we have early release or late arrival, so sometimes having the option does make it easier, but I really do see the safety concern. But I think one thing also to think about is just when we do those fire drills, and just if we ever have been needed to evacuate the building. I know you guys are thinking more of what if someone comes in, but then also, how do we get that large amount just out of the building in a safe and just seamless fashion? So if anything were to happen, you could do it in like an organized manner. So I think that's something to consider, too, just so you're getting everyone out as well. So I wouldn't say that we need seventy-one doors, but maybe we need half of that, or a quarter of that.
But an architectural study would give us the name, the number according to fire code.
Right, I, excellent point. I, an architectural study would, because that's building code items. Building code is based foremost on how to get people out of the building in an emergency, and it dictates how far you can travel, and how many doors you need, and how wide the doors need to be. So that's all cut and dry. So excellent.
Let me ask a question of our student representative, too. She mentioned class sizes, too. How does the room, it's been a couple of years since I've been inside the building to stop for classes, and I always felt that classrooms were small, and the halls were too cramped. I almost talked apophobically. You guys get that same impression that the rooms are tiny, and the halls were cramped, too? What's your impression of that?
I mean, I, over the last four years, I've had the chance to be in, like, big classes and small classes, and they're definitely, they're definitely small, especially for our population. Upton High is a big school with a lot of kids in it, so like, it definitely can get a little distracting or like cramped, and it can definitely affect the learning environment. Like, I see myself doing better in the classes, like, it's my kids' teachers are very smaller classes, and they're more productive classes, just because of the size. So I definitely see how maybe a bigger room could also help as well.
And, you know, a lot of those classrooms have been subdivided. They were bigger, and when we needed more space, we cut them in half.
Yeah.
So that's why you got all the different sizes.
I wondered.
Yeah, yeah. And in the old days, we used to be able to chain those doors, so not all the doors the kids couldn't get out of, but the fire department came in, though, you can't do that anymore.
That's one thing, if there's a door, it's got to be openable in an emergency, because people go to it.
Any other top points that you want the board to know about the high school, Mary? Anything else that comes to mind, rises?
No, that's about it. Two major points. Yeah, if we might move on, some information for Smith, kind of more of the same. And if we look at the next one, there's, you'll see in your packets, we talked about the priorities for that school as well. I don't want to take up more time than I'll allow, but let's see, let's go on. We've talked a lot about the space analysis tonight, or a little bit. What we've done is, we've looked at how many kids can each school accommodate. And basically, with elementary or, elementary and the little kids, they're pretty much staying in the same room, you know? They have a class, and they might go to the office, nothing to do with it. It's easy to come up those rooms. But basically, we're looking at the rooms that are occupied, say, at the beginning of the day and throughout the day, and how many kids are accommodated in those rooms. And when we did that study, we found that many of the schools seem to have far less occupancy than they could handle. And in this chart, the blue bars are the actual enrollment of these schools, and the orange are the number of students that the schools should be able to accommodate. And you see across the board, this school seems to be underpopulated that way.
Is that based on current enrollment, not projected enrollment?
This is current, yes. We did look at the projected, it didn't seem to be increasing a lot, so based it on the numbers we had.
So I just wanted to remind the board of something I mentioned probably two or three months ago about the support that we've gotten from our legislative delegation. One of the key factors that you'll see in the very supportive and very helpful legislation that we've gotten passed, thanks to our legislative delegation, for these projects has included this thing called the space waiver. So if you take a look at these percentages, and I'm speaking in very rough terms, but really, what should have happened according to the existing law without the special legislation that we benefited from, would be to take our reimbursement rate and then multiply it by that percentage. So the capacity that Mary's talking about is basically the capacity that the state would expect that we were already at in order to gain the full reimbursement. So, Ms. Gonzalez, remind me, our regular reimbursement rate is about eighty-two percent, is it? Or am I high?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine percent. So without the special legislation, the city would be reimbursed at approximately seventy-nine percent of the cost of a project. That assumes you've got a hundred percent capacity. So in very, very rough terms, it's much more complicated than this, but basically, if you're at, my eyes fail me, Slade is at, what's that say?
Fifty-seven.
Right, so you would take our seventy-nine percent and multiply seventy-nine percent by fifty-seven percent, and that's the money that the city would receive as reimbursement for that project. Instead, again, thanks to our legislative delegation, the city's receiving ninety-five percent reimbursement regardless of enrollment. It's an immense amount of money saved back to the city of New Britain, right, borne by state taxpayers, which of course, we're all also state taxpayers. But I just wanted to highlight the fact that the other places in which I've worked would be highly jealous of the ninety-five percent reimbursement that we benefited from without the, with the space waiver on top of that.
How long does that last?
It is a bill-by-bill process, so that's what I said earlier. Ms. Gonzalez, I'm correct, that Jefferson is currently, is in current legislation?
In legislation, yes.
But other projects are not. So basically, as projects have come up, and we've gotten support from our state legislators, right?
Throw holy water on it.
Correct, right? So it's been, it's been a project-by-project thing that, I want to make sure, you really can't understate, probably tens and tens of millions of dollars have been saved for the local taxpayer based on this legislation. So it's something that we should be thankful for, and we should continue to collaborate with our delegation on, because having tried to do this process in my previous district, our starting percentage was going to be sixty-two percent, that's the stock rate, instead of seventy-nine, my previous district was going to be sixty-two percent. But then we had numbers like this. So rather than getting sixty-two percent, we were looking in some cases nineteen percent reimbursement, thirty-five percent reimbursement. So it's a, I'm sorry to get into the politics of building schools or renovating schools, but it's really important that we continue to work on those relationships with our delegation so that we can continue this. And when I toured Chamberlain with Rep. Sanchez, you know, of course, I expressed our gratitude, but with, without that, there's a real, I believe, tangible impact on the kids. If we didn't have that reimbursement rate, rather than doing a project every two or three or four years, right, we would be doing these projects every ten years, right? Which means, rather than kids going to a school that hasn't been touched in twenty or thirty years, maybe that school hasn't been touched in thirty or forty years. So you stretch out the time. So you stretch out the time in between your renovation and your reconstruction projects based on finances. So pardon me for kind of going on about this, but it really, it can't be overstated just how important it is, those special legislation bills that have been passed in our benefit.
And I just want to jump off of your, off of that. We also have a nice amount of money, $25 million, that has been saved for a preschool project that has been, that was put off for some time. And honestly, within the next few months, we need to be able to know what we're going to do with that, or we can lose that money. So we need to make sure that that's something that we're really working on.
Which we can use a study, some educators are putting the studies on. But I've seen firsthand, though, looking at that to this chart, I mean, I've seen some classrooms advanced that I could tell were converted closets, because they are so short, classrooms. And literally, I had, in order to move a child, I had to move four desks just so that child went to the bathroom. We had to move desks out of the way, because they were literally from one wall to the other cramped together. So I've seen firsthand Vance, Brookside the same way, North End. So that's great now current enrollment, and I, I'm concerned with such these whole three schools. If we were suddenly have a spike enrollment, what would happen to those three schools?
So what we do at the moment is working with central registration. Basically, Ms. Velazquez and I will, will make the call to, to freeze enrollment if a particular grade at Vance School has reached capacity and a new family moves to town to the Vance Zone, we, we have them register at another school.
Now I know why when we, my son was, was enrolled at North End, when I asked him to move to Jefferson, now I know why they jumped at them so quickly, because there's that capacity there.
So not just talking about buildings, but talking about the board's current zones for schools. And, and as you've probably seen, that's one of the reasons it's a chart in my budget narrative for you is the equity of class size. So you see that by elementary school, by grade in my budget narrative for you specifically for this, right? So first, the board needs to, I think, have a conversation in the long-term view of how many elementary schools do you want to have? Because the number doesn't necessarily need to be 10 based on the data you have here. And then if the board wants to entertain that, how should it be zoned, right? We've tried a lot of things in this district. We've tried basically magnetizing the whole district where kids could choose their school, the community school model. These are all decisions for you, the board, to make, and the staff and I are ready to help you with that.
Based on the suggestion I saw in there, we could take North End, convert that to an all preschool, and not really, and have the other schools absorb the elementary and possibly not affect enrollment.
One small thing that Ms. Gonzalez and I verified is actually kindergarten, pre-K and kindergarten by law are supposed to be on the ground floor.
Ground floor.
For ease of egress. But that's not to say that, and I don't want to say a school name, because then rumors start spreading that we're closing a school. But that's not to say for, you know, the, the numbers are playing, and I don't know, were you guys going to get to the next slide? Is, you gonna, is that a slide for the board to see the next page in the report? Page 17 in the report.
I didn't put that in the slide because it's in the report.
Perfect. But page 17 in the report takes those percentages. For example, Chamberlain is currently, our newest school is currently at 61% capacity. As said, though, Vance is at 110% capacity, right? That tells me it's time to, for the board to consider rezoning. And again, we're, you know, the staff and I are ready to help, but that, that would be a board vote, a board decision. But then are you going to ask me to, to show you what that looks like with 10 elementary schools, nine elementary schools, eight elementary schools? What does it look like if the board wants to go to three middle schools like the town used to have? So that's why I say tonight's presentation is really just the beginning of the conversation. There's so many critical and important decisions for the board to make based on the data you're getting tonight.
I just want to say, when it comes to closing schools, in the past, what has happened, once you close a school, you don't get it back. So when we get to the point where we need another school, we're at the Catholic school over there renting, you know, because the enrollment goes up and down, up and down.
To Mr. Kane's point, though, I, I think part of the conversation is also what programs do we want to offer? It doesn't necessarily mean taking a building and turning it back over to the city, which is, you know, was, is what can't happen if you fully abandon a school. But does the board envision a time when we have more alternative schools at the middle school level, at the elementary level, at the high school level, right? So with the, in other words, what do you want to do with your buildings? Right? So that's why the, the report has two really important pieces. One is just upkeep, the blue bars versus the gray bars, let's make sure that we're keeping our buildings healthy. But it's really, we have nineteen, currently, we have 19 programs at 16 sites. Is that what you, the board, wants? Is that what you, the board, think serves the kids the best? Not, not only right now, but we've got to be thinking five and 10 and 15 years in the future. So again, I'm excited. There's a lot of really interesting conversations to be had.
Now, adult air is uncovered in this, right?
Adult air is mentioned in the report, yes. Yep. So Mary, we've talked a lot, maybe we should try to like, what's the last five minutes of stuff that you think the board needs to know about?
Okay, well, I, I think you need to use the data to prioritize, sorry.
Prioritize?
Prioritize which schools get the next upgrades. Yeah, I think you need to look at that. I, I think there's something going on with what we were just talking about, some schools having too many kids and some not having enough. I think that a high school definitely could stand to use the study that we've been talking about. And again, as far as individual items that need to be done district-wide through all the schools, prioritize building integrity and safety. Now, and other things, well, HVAC, okay, interior comfort, but you know, those are the important things, and the kids aren't going to learn if they're too hot. So I, that's what I would say. One last thing is, I'll work with the school district on prioritizing that, because we have a way of doing that for individual items. We actually have a little algorithm that helps us point out individual items throughout the district that need to be replaced. So that's another tool that's going to be available for you to use and look at.
I just, on the report, page number nine, packet page number 16, there is the report of immediate needs.
Yes.
Which in this, in this display is shown by school with the most to school with the least. And it shows very close to $5 million worth of immediate needs. So as I've mentioned to the board before, this is also part of my plan to, in the current year, when we're spending less money on, less of the ESAR dollars on staffing, to spend some of those monies on stuff that lasts longer than the grant. Now, we don't have $5 million spare hanging around. Ms. Alfano gave me an update the other day. But again, spending money on recommendations coming out of the security audit and also here, again, to minimize the impact on the local taxpayer is what we plan to do. Going forward, something that the board hasn't done that, in a very small ways in my budget proposal to you this year, is making capital budget requests to the city. As I, as I've learned more, that just hasn't been done in recent history. And it really should be an annual thing. We should be making annual capital budget requests to the city. They don't, of course, they're not going to, or might not honor every single request, but as the board does new bonding packages, using the capital budget request as a way to kind of normalize the board's budget. Otherwise, a year when we might have one big item from this list to do, it kind of automat, artificially throws off what our budget looks like. It looks like we're spending a lot of money in a year on the kids or on textbooks or on, I don't know, a Maserati for the superintendent, right? Right? When we're not, when we're not. It's really just capital stuff. So it's a, it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to collaborate with city government on showing that we're trying to, to be good, good custodians, good caretakers of, of the school buildings.
Definitely went to some further discussions on it, because homes, I mean, definitely saw in there, is up for the next renovations, and the chart does need it. DiLoreto, I'm disappointed in, because, you know, I've been involved in politics and education now for 35 years, and in that time, DiLoreto has had three renovations. And it's seen the condition it's in after three renovations.
But I think as you read the report, you'll find different parts of the building have different levels of need.
Right. I'm just saying, some of those things, I'm surprised, weren't caught in those three renovations. And the high school, definitely, and the two audits, some things that, the things were caught in both audits. So we definitely have to have some serious talks about what our prayer is going to be going forward on our buildings. So what's next?
Okay, that's my thing. When are we talking? When are we doing, what are we putting up into the road?
So you have a facilities committee each month?
Yeah, I'm already, I'm already saying, this is, I want this on the next agenda. A plan, our next step on the next, it's already put on the next agenda. Every month, it's going to be on the agenda, our next step. You got that, Agent?
Further questions for, for Mary or for Ms. Gonzalez or Mr. Kane?
I do have a couple of questions. I did want to point out, though, based on the immediate needs, homes accounts for about 1.4 million of that total of just under five. So if we're already renovating it, that money's already been approved by the state. That's a big chunk right there that will be addressed immediately. One question was regarding Gaffney, because I know that was a recent full renovation, and I think the only building we've done a full gut renovation on, or the first building we've had a full gut renovation on since they were built. But I noticed that there were some, some opportunities for energy efficiency improvement. I'm just wondering what those might be, and considering that we didn't do the building that long ago, why maybe we didn't do it fully at the time?
That's a good point, because I think it was 2015?
Yes.
That was done? You know, what's a funny thing is that even back then, you know, what, eight, eight years ago, eight, nine years ago, lighting, LED lighting wasn't as widespread. And LED lighting uses an eighth of what incandescent lighting uses, it uses half of what regular fluorescent tubes use, and it just wasn't as widespread a few years ago. These days, there's no excuse not to use LED lighting, and that's one of our number-one recommendations for energy. Just get rid of everything that's not LED lighting. It pays for itself quickly.
Okay.
That's one thing.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And, and water is another thing. Just the sinks, the aerators on sinks, the, if you must spend a little more money retrofitting the flush valves to a lower flow. Those are fairly new things in the past few years that we now recommend it, because they pay for themselves now.
Okay, great, thank you. The other question, I noticed, Smith, there was a recommendation for a traffic study based on flow of drop-off in bus. I've had a long concern on a couple other sites that are based on the fact they're on main roads, DiLoreto, Jefferson, my own children went to Vance, which is a very busy street, and there's, when we read Vance 15 years ago, or 18 years ago, there's no loop. Like, we added a loop to Lincoln, we added a loop to DiLoreto, there's no drop-off on Vance, so you end up with double parking on both sides where there's supposed to be none, along with Shutter Metal, which was a major thoroughfare in the south part of the city. And I'm just wondering about potential for traffic studies in those areas, what improvements we can make for student safety.
Well, I didn't put it in the overall report, but if you look at the individual reports, we put that recommendation in all the other schools.
Gaffney's got it, yeah. I saw Gaffney has it.
Okay, missed the, okay.
And Gaffney's in another neighborhood.
I just saw it on Smith.
They come up to the neighborhood.
We were told that when a lot of the schools were built, people, kids pretty much walked along here, and now we're not walking.
Mine did, up to Gaffney, right.
Well, that's another problem. Looking over a lot of the recommendations there, a lot of these schools are landlocked. You know, Jefferson, you have, the footprint of the school is pretty much on the road, except for they have that nice area behind it, but really, the building itself is right on the road. Vance, you have no room to build.
State wouldn't let you build them today based on recommendations for English.
No. And that's the problem we have with New Britain High. New Britain High would never be built the way it is now under current law.
Thank you.
Pretty depressing, huh?
I think it's exciting, yeah. I think it's exciting. I'm very big on, yeah, mistakes happen in the past. Where do we go from here? And that's why, okay, we have the report, we know we gotta, we know things have to be changed. Okay, let's start making the decisions. We have hard decisions to make. People aren't going to be happy if they got it done. Any further questions?
Is, is there going to be a blending, to your point, a blending of this with the security study for these discussions that he's putting on his agenda every month?
In, in discussion, yes.
Okay.
I know the security study is 600 pages, and this is only one of multiple documents here, so I don't want to promise you that I have the time or the staff to actually make...
To infuse it during discussion is fine.
Absolutely.
Like, just tonight, when we were talking about New Britain High, you referenced 72 doors, they're in both reports.
Yeah, absolutely.
Things that might come up, things that you know that might fit both.
Absolutely.
Even the middle schools, you know, which, both of which seem to be 57 and 65% capacity, but there's security concerns, maybe?
Right, there you go. Those are the kind of non-architectural questions of, do you want to have middle schools that have seven and nine hundred kids in them? Or do, what's, what's the experience that you want as a board for the children?
Yeah.
You know, so the, the architecture, the, the facilities needs is certainly one part of that, but the other part is the experience that you want New Britain kids to have.
And also, like, to add this point, too, if you close, once you close a school, you never get it back. It's part of the problem we have with New Britain High right now.
I'm not saying I'm closing anybody.
With New Britain High, if we closed Pulaski, is that...
No, I think we've, we've got an opportunity to, I would say, repurpose rather than...
Repurpose, yeah.
That's probably a better way.
Yes, yeah.
We've got all these nice 16 buildings, let's figure out how we use all 16.
I just want to share that the report has already yielded some positive results for us. We were able to use it over the last week to meet the deadline for HVAC grant submissions, and we submitted two for the district. Hopefully, we get some funding to upgrade some of our HVAC systems and just indoor air quality specifically, because we have laws that we have to abide by in terms of improving indoor air quality. So we were able to use them, or because it's now a requirement for the state.
For the state.
And we had a comprehensive facility study to apply for grants.
Next year or the year after?
So that's, Ms. Gonzalez brings up an excellent point, and something she and I began speaking about upon my arrival last school year, is there are grants each and every year for facilities, indoor air quality, and school security. And we were unable to apply for them, and I'm assuming prior to my arrival, we were not applying for them, basically because we lacked these two studies that we now have. So that, that's just further confirmation that this isn't a one-and-done. This is something that the board should be, if I don't remind you, you should be asking your superintendent for, hey, our, our facilities report's five years old now, when's the next time we should get an update? Because it's, it's one of those things that I think the average parent probably doesn't think much of, right? Perhaps when some of you were thinking about being on the board, you didn't think we were going to talk, right? You thought, well, I went to school, and my kids went to school, so I know school. And then you realize, no, we, you're the governance and I'm the management for an enterprise of 16 buildings with 19 programs, with 9,700 clients in them every day, with 1,600 employees. We're in charge of a very large enterprise, and making sure that your buildings are up to snuff is something that is, should have been happening all along. I'm not going to speculate why it apparently didn't, but I feel like we're, we're getting back on the right track now.
Listen, Kelly. My, it's two questions, but I'm going to merge them all together and just ask this. Have you presented before the school board committee yet?
No.
And was that something that you guys were going to be doing after? And so after this, the next step is to then have it in school board committee. And then what's worth mentioning is that our charter has not changed. It has been the same forever. When it clearly reads that we need to submit reports to the city, and the prior administration chose not to, or whoever else was in position chose not to. So it shouldn't be sticker shock, we're just really getting the full, what we should have known before COVID kicked in and prices went up and everybody else and whatever other decisions. This is information that we should have been demanding all along. And whoever didn't change, whoever did, in fact, thank you for asking for it and for convincing us that we needed to and what the need was, but it didn't mean much convincing. And so I appreciate the information that you have put in here, whatever other documents, if there is any other, you know, maybe somebody else asked a question that really kind of goes, gives you the aha moment that you need to go, maybe we should expand it over here. I'm really interested, because I'm sorry, I did watch my kids. I'm really interested, because I'm sorry, I did watch my kids in closets for special education, and that really was it. It was, it wasn't desks, it was four chairs, because that's all they could fit, and because there was no heat down there, the kids were all wearing their coats. That, that's, that was our education delivery. So it's, this is where we learn. I thank you for that. I appreciate the information. You've given me an opportunity to digest some, not all, I will admit to you. So I know I will have questions, because I don't understand. I'm getting ready. I'm going to get my number, and I'm going to send them right over him, so, over to him, so that way he can ask you through him to be able to make sure that we get the information that we can all learn from, because that's what's important to me.
Okay, Tina, you got it.
Why don't you jump in and help me?
I'm happy, I'm happy. I said what the values that weren't included on these, I'm not sure why they're included that, but I know the electronic version had it, and I'm not sure why this hard copy didn't.
Yeah, they weren't on the draft either.
Yeah, it's checked into.
I don't know why.
Draft has the boxes, but not the values.
The second and third pie chart have the same value. The hundred thousand doesn't appear on the third pie chart. It's forty, the forty-six, I'm sorry, one hundred and eleven million, whatever it was. It's supposed forty-six, and it's duplicated again on the eleven to twenty is forty-six million as well.
We'll triple check.
So you just got to, you got to fix that.
It wasn't the state where there was one difference, right? One was forty-seven, one's supposed to be forty-three, and the other was twenty-seven. It was an error.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, moving into new business, can I have a motion to approve minutes from the regular report of education meeting on December fourth?
Move on three. Second?
No, no question.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, move into item B, enrollment report.
As board members will notice, we maintain approximately two percent up over last year. That number's been fairly steady for this school year, about two percent.
I don't believe we vote on this, right?
Nope.
And report of personnel transactions and extracurricular appointments.
Motion to approve?
We don't have to.
We don't have to, yeah.
Yep. Information will only go forward.
There you go.
Is there anything anyone would like to pull off consent?
I would like to remove items P and Q.
P and Q? Can I have a motion to accept a grant from the Office of Early Childhood to provide one-time support to the private providers that received fiscal year 2023 cost of adjustments district-wide in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'm just abstaining, yeah.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one extension. And can I have a motion to accept a grant from the Office of Early Childhood to support any costs associated with providing early childhood care and education services from April first, 2023, through June thirtieth, 2024, district-wide in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
And another extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one extension. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of review of the superintendent's contract?
Did you adopt the consent agenda?
No, consent, yeah.
I apologize.
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Do you have a second for consent?
Second.
All those in favors?
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to make one comment on, if I may, regarding item C, the recommended policy for adoption for houses. It's going perfectly transparent what the board is, following the policy committee discussion, we did have a meeting of the superintendent's DEI advisory council, and it was a very stimulating conversation, at which we discovered that Ms. Velazquez and I were doing the math in exactly opposite ways, but to the same result. So I just want to be perfectly transparent. It was a very good conversation at that council. I continue to support the recommended policy wording as stated. So you had a, you had a, I apologize, before I interrupted, you had a motion for a second for the consent.
All, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. May I have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of review of the superintendent's contract?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This would just be with the full board?
The full board, yeah.
Okay.
Great. Is there any new business as permitted by law? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
You can adjourn, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.